Second order business is considered the rezoning of the eastern side of the 500 block of Commercial Street from Business General BG to Residential R3. Chuck, you want to take what you got first?
I have two letters in direct response to this zoning request. The first one, this will be the second time that this has been read, dated September the first, 2022, Clifton Forge Town Council. My name is Russell Krantz and I own two parcels of property at 510 Commercial Street, which are under consideration for rezoning. This property has a building which has been zoned as commercial since long before my purchase. The building is a large brick structure that once housed tractor and trailers waiting to be repaired or stored. The structure nor building located which sits far off the street lends itself to residential uses without substantial costs and upgrades. In fact, an alley separates my property from Commercial Street. As a property owner, I have maintained and improved this property. This location remains neat in appearance and in no way detracts from the area. The rezoning of this property not only breaks the implied trust I have with the city to respect current zoning, it places an undue financial burden on myself and any future owners. This has potentially devastating effects on my property value. I have long invested in Clifton Forge and it struggled with declining population and businesses. It is businesses that are helping revive Clifton Forge. I am asking that you do not penalize those of us who made the investment in our town long ago by changing the zoning and removing more potential business properties. Thank you for hearing my concerns. I am asking that you deny the recommendation to rezone my property. If rezoning does occur, please consider making a waiver possible for this location due to the alley technically excluding it from being a part of the curbside of Commercial Street. Sincerely, Russell Krantz. And just as a response to the meeting we had here the other night that this letter was read the first time, in just a minute, I'll show you on the wall, we have it projected up on the wall, so you'll be able to see the various properties and how they're laid out, and we'll go, I'll explain that. And then I have a second letter, which is dated September the 15th, 2022. To whom it may concern, as property owner of a house located at 508 Commercial, Clifton Forge, Virginia, I wish to confirm my belief that said property and surrounding properties be zoned as residential. Thank you. Marjorie Cavender, P.O. Box 585, Charleston, West Virginia. She has her phone number on here. That's all the correspondence that we've received on that in this office.
You want to go ahead and show it to you?
Whenever you'd like.
Go ahead and then I'll go to the audience and then I'll...
I'm going to have to put y'all back in the dark a little bit. This block right here is the blocking question. All these properties front on Commercial Avenue. The property that Mr. Krantz is referring to, you can't see it too well, but it is a brick block building that sits right here. Mr. Krantz had this property surveyed last week. If you go up there, you'll see the survey ribbons. According to the survey, Mr. Krantz owns this property. He owns the rail spur right away behind this property. And he owns the third parcel, which by the survey shows about a 30 or 35-foot driveway right here coming from Commercial Street all the way back to this fence line. There's another lot right here that according to the survey is currently listed as owner undetermined. It goes back, if you trace it back by the survey crew to an oil company at one time. Our tax records downstairs indicate that this lot, the taxes are being paid on that by Mr. Krantz. It has been for some time. Mr. Krantz, I think, thought that he owns this whole parcel right here. And that's what everybody looking at this thought, but when we talked to Greg Best yesterday, he indicated that there's a 25-foot lot right here of undetermined ownership. That really doesn't enter into the decision whether or not to rezone the property. It might enter into the decision if you decide to exclude a piece of property by owner's name. You probably need to know exactly the properties that you're excluding by the owner's name. Mr. Jenkins can elaborate more on that because...
I appreciate Mr. Best's work, but I think as the town's records have that as a single parcel, for our purposes, we're treating it as a single parcel.
But this is the block and this was the property in question that he was asking for the exemption on.
Well, the lower one behind...
This one right here.
You copy this one?
No, the one right above.
This one?
That one.
Yep.
This property fronts on High Street and is not part of the rezoning request.
How wide is that 35-foot drive?
How wide is it?
Yeah.
About 35 feet. Have you visited it?
Yeah, you said 35 foot. I thought we said 35. You said 35 foot wide.
Yeah.
And then there's still another piece of property between there and the Rusty Squad.
Right.
That's the property is undetermined ownership, but he is going to pay taxes.
Now, the survey doesn't provide our taxes. You can't, well, they're 25 miles.
Jared, are you saying that...
Let me back off, Taylor.
I don't know if anybody needs to see that or not. Are you saying that everything is a single parcel, L-shaped? Or you're saying that the parking, you know, it's viewed as an open parking lot to parcel and the parcel with the building is a separate parcel or... They are separate, okay.
Any other questions to Chuck, but it's canceled?
Let's see if the audience has any.
Anyone want to speak on the zoning? Eric, you want to come up to the... Eric, just give your name and address for us, please.
My name's Eric Brennan. I live at 513 Commercial Avenue here in Clifton Forge. I've been owner of my home since 2002. I'm not the one, one of the ones that's, ours also, the zoning or whatever. I live across the street from the Rusty Squad. The Rusty Squad, when it was there, were very good neighbors and I knew close good neighbors. But what I have an issue with is, right now, as my, as my home sits, it assesses and it also, you know, it assesses it at a good value, but also... And so what I, what bothers me is, it's not going to if it gets bought by someone who wants to put a garage or something of that nature in. And that's been a, we hadn't had to worry about that for so many, all these years since it's been a Rusty Squad and everything. Like I say, they were great when they were there, but now it's coming to the point where it's going to be sold. And I ask each and every one of you, if you live in my home, which is set right across from the Rusty Squad, would you be concerned about it becoming a place of, with vehicles parked outside of it, piling around? I mean, Carl Grinkley fought really hard with this property. It's right across the street from this town hall. And I'll note at one time how unicycling it looked and how it was an isolate. And so he fought and fought hard. And the person that owned that owns property now that is just as unicycling and just as, and just as bad as it was here in Tampa. So that's where my, my concern comes from because I, I'm not looking to sell my home or anything like that. I love my home. I love living in Clifton Forge and all, but I'm just asking everyone of you, if you had the same, were stuck in the same dilemma, would you want that to happen? And that's why I'm in favor of it becoming, of being residential. Like I said, I want to reiterate and say again, the Rusty Squad were good neighbors. I'd like to continue to be neighborly. And not to mention the fact that we're in a historic zone. My house has been, it's placed in the historic zone. I got notice of that. It's not been told that I have to have it in any, any certain manner or shape or manner or form or anything, but I think the only reason that I don't get asked about that is because I try to keep my home nice. I try to keep it, curb appeal. I try to have the curb appeal. I mean, I've, I've had vinyls in my home. I've replaced all the windows in my home. I've done a lot of, done a lot of work to my home. And I just want to continue to keep the block cycling. And that's, that's, that's my plea. And that's what I, what I, what I ask for you as far as that's concerned. I mean, it's not easy getting up here. I'll just tell you that.
You did a great job.
I would avoid it at our house, but it's, it's, it's near and dear. So that's why I haven't said what I do. And I don't think I've got anything more. And I appreciate y'all and in your ears.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
I'm J.L. Beattie, 512 Commercial Street, right across. Eric, I feel like we don't beat a deer horse to death on this thing, but it's got to the point, you know, we was concerned about Mike buying Rusty Squad. Now Rusty doesn't come into the deal. My problem is, if he buy, if we, if y'all zone Rusty's as business, how y'all will keep, get him like business, take it as a business, zone his as a business. He personally is more, we got, we got 14 houses on that street, on the back side. So I assumed that ought to make it residential. We've been trying to keep our houses up, and I thought that's what Clifton Forge is all about, keeping your property up, make it look good. And I heard from y'all as council, Chuck and all of you, said Mike will, Mike said, Mike said he want to put something inside of it. Chuck said, well, you can do, noted as residential and still do that. And he said, well, I'm going to keep my options open. So in other words, it's going to probably be a bunch of junk up there. So that's going to lower our pocket value. And we are considered as a historic street town. And I've done a lot of work in my house and I know what's been done, hope. And I'm 75 years old, and I don't want to see that street go down. I mean, it's just going down a playback. Now, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with Rusty. Mike even wants, but I don't want to see him come in tight with this pile of junk in on this street. And which, like I said, I talked to y'all, I've heard at the lot and all that yesterday. Y'all know my views on this thing. But it's up to y'all, you know, like I said, I'm a fully engaged Christian. I ain't going to say you're arguing, though. We'll just have to take what chips may pop. I hope and pray y'all do the right thing. This is all you can say.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming out.
Anybody else from the audience?
Can I ask a quick question?
I'm going to call.
Okay, I'm going to answer.
Diane, would you come up and state what, as chairman of the planning commission, what y'all voted on and how?
I am a clean Smith, 224 Highlands Street, Clifton Forge. I am the chairman of the planning commission. However, a staff report should have been provided to the council on our decision and our planning. It's my understanding that you did not receive a staff report. At the last council meeting, I informed you that the planning commission did vote unanimously to approve the entire block to be rezoned from BG to R3. I also, at that time, during that meeting, asked the residents that appeared at that meeting and voiced their concerns if they objected. Any of them objected to Mr. Krantz's request. We were told just verbally that he had requested that his property not be rezoned. No one at that meeting objected. However, we did not have the letter that was read this evening before us. And as I said, we did vote unanimously to approve the whole block. I cannot sit here and speak for other members of the planning commission. I'm only one vote, one person. However, given what I have now as a citizen, and as I know now, based on the information that has been provided, I would have personally argued more in favor of Mr. Krantz's request. I would point out that even though it would stay Business General, there can be no outdoor storage in that Business General district without a conditional use permit being granted. I would be 100% as an individual against conditional use permit for outdoor storage in any business district because, like everyone knows, it becomes an isolate most of the So that's basically...
I have a question for Diane for you. What would have made, what made you change from the night we had the planning commission meeting and the letter? Why a different opinion now?
Because this building is not easily seen. It sits behind, it sits off the street. It does not front Commercial Avenue. It sits back behind. It is a very large building, as you've seen it, you know. It's used currently for storage and I just think that in the interest of being business friendly, that granting Mr. Krantz's request would not impact negatively an act...
Okay, my question for you is, if, if his intention is to use that building for future use and store things inside of it, then what difference does it make if it's residential or commercial? And my other question for you is, if you were one of the houses that lived right there, you know, you've got the alley, I've been out there, I've looked at it extensively. You've got the alley separates the back of those houses from that property, but if you lived in one of those houses, how would you feel about that?
Well, it's been there for umpteen years and there's been no problem. If it, if it stays the way it is, if it's used the way it is, what difference does it make? I mean, the neighborhood is, would, you know, hasn't adversely affected the neighborhood to date. If I'm sitting on that street, you know, I, I don't know that I would have a concern because it's not, it's not, like I said, it's behind houses. And if there's no outdoor storage, then...
Then what difference does it make if it's residential or it's commercial?
Well, if that, that is not, you know, up to me to, to answer that question. That's Mr. Krantz's, the owner of that property, his concern.
Okay.
And I, and I respect his reasoning.
To me, it would, it would change, my opinion, you said it's been BG for umpteen years. To me, I, it would, it would make a difference to me if it was a business being run out of there. For umpteen years that you said, I've never seen a business being, just a storage, and it's not a storage business, it's just a personal storage. So there's really, being business friendly is fine and wonderful, and I'm for all that too, but there's not really a business there now.
My concern is, even if it's been there like it is for umpteen years, that doesn't mean it's going to stay that way. Things are changing, things are moving, people are, it, it just has a lot of potential for change.
I understand.
I am concerned about the property owners that are joining though.
I just think that when someone spends their own money to buy something and they rely upon our zoning, that it was business when they bought it, you know, and it may have affected the price that they paid. We've got to really think about that. As he said in his letter, it could really severely impact the economic value of his property. And I think that's the big concern. You say, why does it matter if it's residential business? It, it matters for property values when people invest.
Well, just so we're clear, if we do rezone it to residential, he can maintain the current use, that's no problem. It's vested in as is. So that would be locked in, has no change in his use, or someone can buy it and use the building as is for as long as they want. So it would be zoned residential. That would just keep things from expanding or changing from how they are now.
Do you have any more questions?
Any more questions?
No, thank you, Diane.
Thank you. Councillor, you have any comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Every house up through there is a beautiful home. Excellent homeowners, they take care of their property, and Diane said that it wouldn't affect it. Mr. Krantz is not in the top of the line health, and he's probably going to sell that property at some time or another, if not. And that, that 35-foot right away connects it to Commercial Street. So if someone, if it stays zoned the way it is, trucks, everything could come right up Commercial, turn in that driveway right there and turn down that alley, a constant flow of traffic around that house. I, you know, a 35-foot right away, that's about here to that other side of that podium. Anybody know about football, it's 10 yards. You know, it's not a whole lot for a tractor and trailer or something to get around through there, without swinging over into other property. And, and, you know, at first, before Rusty mentioned it, the planning commission voted 100% to vote everything on that side of the street until a verbal comment came, that he verbally said he would like to keep it the same. And that was the first writing, I'm assuming, we got from him, it's right there.
And we received that after...
After the vote.
The planning commission meeting.
After the planning commission meeting, you know, I'm totally 100% for rezoning all of it to residential. And he still used the same way it is. The same, you know, the same way it is.
Like I said, there are properties that have been ways for, I think we said, for umpteen years, you know, there's people that live on Kesselk Street that have businesses that live behind it, that are located behind it, not living. So I think that we, if we were to consider Mr. Krantz's proposal, we could be satisfying the existing property owners, like Mr. Brennan said, you know, the Rusty Squad was a very good neighbor. It's no longer a Rusty Squad. So I, I don't feel as bad about rezoning that. That's no longer being used by the Clifton Forge Rusty Squad. If it was, I think it would be wrong to rezone it. But right now, the potential for anybody to move in and put something in as a business general, that's a danger when it affronts Commercial Street. Something behind it, I, I think that we could, we could consider that as different because it's not on Commercial Street, and we could be satisfying more, more property owners than just saying, let's just rezone it off. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to argue that when you say you're going to satisfy more property owners, you're going to satisfy one property owner versus all of the houses that border that particular piece of property, which, how many houses is that? It's quite a few. It's what, eight houses maybe, that are right, right on the other side of that, that alley? If, if that property can continue being used as it is in residential status, I will say it again, what difference does it make?
And the, the 35-foot right away does connect it to Commercial Street. That's, that's the big deal right there. If, if, if Mr. Krantz was to sell it or anything, people could use that right away constantly, constant.
They could do it then.
Yeah, you know, but at only way it stands now, yeah, the way it stands now.
They could do it now.
Yeah.
It's an open alleyway now.
And his, his property, that, that right away, and he didn't say it didn't connect it in his letter, it does connect it to Commercial Street. The building doesn't show from Commercial Street, but with that property, that right way to there, that connects it to Commercial.
Any more discussion?
No.
If none, I'm going to call for a motion. I'm going to do it in two, two motions. Go ahead, Joe.
Issue is if the motion is the same as we had in the prior meeting, which there were two. One was to approve everything, the rezoning of everything. One part, say, took this parcel out. If that is the substance of either of the motions, we first need to vote on reconsidering the prior vote from the last meeting. If that's, that reconsideration is approved, then you'll take a separate vote on that standing motion. So that, you just need to, if it's the same motion that you've already voted on, you need to move to reconsider that before a final...
First.
Yeah.
Reconsider both the motions, right?
Just whichever motion is potentially coming to the floor.
All right, then I need a motion to reconsider the rezoning of the 500 block of Commercial without the Krantz building.
So this is taking the one parcel out?
I have a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Olmstead?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
No.
Councilman Burdette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lauderdale?
No.
Mayor Irvin?
No.
And now the motion.
Do I have the second?
Do I have a motion to rezone the 500 block of Commercial?
Need to reconsider this, all the parcels?
Yes.
Reconsider all of them?
I'm asking, is that the motion is to rezone all of them together?
Yes.
Okay, so then you need to, another motion to reconsider the vote on rezoning them all.
So here a motion to reconsider rezoning all the buildings on 500 block of Commercial.
So moved.
I hear a second.
Second.
Vice Mayor Olmstead?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
This, this is just to put it back on the floor.
Reconsider.
Reconsider, yes.
Yes.
Councilman Burdette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lauderdale?
Yes.
Mayor Irvin?
Yes.
Now a motion to rezone.
Now a motion to rezone the 500 block of Commercial as stated by the planning
Now a motion to rezone the 500 block of Commercial as stated by the planning commission. Right here a motion.
So moved.
Right here a second.
Second.
Vice Mayor Olmstead?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Burdette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lauderdale?
Yes.
Mayor Urban?
Yes.